I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, we have roll call. John Estrich.
Here.
Bridgette Hayes here. Earl Moore.
Here.
And Dan Roddinghouse.
Here.
So this afternoon, we have a vote to fill Chuck Campbell's seat, and Dan Roddinghouse won the vote. And so Dan will come to the council again if you'd like to say some...
No.
No? Great. Let's go.
Just going to listen in or what?
So just press the little button to get the mic. Okay. First off is the approval of minutes of the executive session on the 21st of August. Can I get a motion to approve minutes?
I'll make that motion.
John made a motion to approve the executive council minutes on August 21st. Is there a second?
A second.
Earl seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the meeting minutes from August 21st of the regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make that motion.
John made a motion to approve the minutes from 21 August. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next are the meeting minutes from the special meeting of August 30th with one correction. Chuck Campbell is listed as absent, but he was actually not... He did not need to attend that meeting because he resigned the meeting before. So with that correction, are there any other corrections? Can I get a motion to approve with that one correction?
Motion.
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Earl seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried with that one correction. Should I just mark it off on here? Next is approval of the claims and payroll. Claims are a total of $434,653.08. And Gina, is there any... Anything you'd like to point out from this claims?
I believe our insurance renewal invoices are out there. You might have saw. And I split those according to the percentages that we've already done in the past. So I think those are the largest invoices that I have on this set page. I can't remember anything else.
Any questions about the claims? All entertaining motion to approve. John made a motion to approve the claims ending September 5th, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Earl seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the payroll. So the payroll total is $57,670.46, with overtime being $1,746.98. Is there a motion to approve the payroll?
Make the motion to approve payroll.
Earl made a motion to approve the payroll. Is there a second? Is there a second to approve the payroll?
Second.
John seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. At the last meeting, since the last meeting, I didn't ask any questions about the claims for the last meeting in public, so I just wanted to let everybody know we paid for the last meeting. Some lawyer fees that a lot of people have been asking about. And the first one was to both McKinney for $4,975. And then there was a second invoice for the hostile work environment investigation for $16,000. So that's just to let the public know that was the last claims. Okay. First on the list is the SCI Ready Grant. Any updates for that? We're still just waiting on the proposals, right? So the questions are due to Tim by September 15th, and then the proposals are due to the town by September 29th. So we're still in a waiting pattern for that. Next on the list is the water wastewater asset management plan approval. So we have two quotes. One is from Triad Engineering, and one is from Commonwealth. Does anyone have any... Tim, would you like to say a few words about these quotes? Or the plan itself or anything?
Five minutes and I'm out.
Yes.
Okay. You want to just table this for a second?
We can't.
Okay. I'm sorry, because I skipped the very first thing, which is the Heather Brahman appeal for the complaint, for the code violation complaint. I apologize. I don't know how I did that, but is Heather here? To lodge her complaint? Does anyone know she was going to come or...
The original tracking letter.
I'm sorry. Can you say that? I can't hear you.
The tracking letter for the letter, the letter that I sent requesting her to appear, I don't have it with me, so I can't.
We can't confirm that she actually got it?
Yes.
I see. Okay. Mr. Cooley's here. Do you want to go ahead and address the board? Even though she's not here? If you don't mind standing up and talking into the microphone? Can we just make sure that's on?
This is on. Oh, Daniel. You remember me?
Yep.
The reason I'm here is because of Heather Graham. About six weeks ago, I'm in the kitchen. My wife is in my son's bedroom. She said, "Bob, come here." Four friggin' chickens and a duck in my front yard. So I went to the police station. I didn't call them. I went to the station and asked him, but he said, "Well, we can't do nothing if we don't see it in person." Six hours later, he showed up. And he went next door. The dogs were going... She's got five or six dogs in the house. They're going crazy. He said, "I wish you would have called me about the dogs, because they are a nuisance," is exactly what he told me. So I'm sitting out on my deck about 6 o'clock that night, and she comes busting through my gate and starts calling me names. The next morning, I talked to Detective Sheriff, because their partner is out there in front of my house. He said, "Well, if she ever does it again, have her arrested for trespassing." That's exactly what he told me. Every day, every morning, 5:30, 6 o'clock, at Stupid Rooster, it wakes everybody, probably wakes everybody in the neighborhood. I guess I'm the only ones got enough guts to say anything. I mean, it's... I have a handicapped son, Les, who is 44 years old. Wakes him up every morning. Wakes all of us up. Now, I'm getting tired of it. It ain't right. I've lived there for 36 years. Never had a bit of problem with anybody until she moved in. It's ridiculous. I mean, I got pictures of the stupid chickens walking through the neighborhood right here on my phone. I got all kinds of recordings right here on my phone. 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, this stupid thing starts. It ain't right. She lives... Well, she lives out... My back door is about 20 yards from them stupid chickens, and her back door is about 10 feet. And you can't tell me that she can't hear that chicken or that rooster every friggin' morning. She don't care. She has no respect for people in the neighborhood. She has no respect for the law. She's got an RV sitting in her backyard, been sitting there for six weeks. And they told me if you have an RV, it has to be sitting on concrete or on a gravel pad. She don't care. She don't care. And she pulled it one time. It has no plates. It's not... No stickers on it, no license plates or nothing. She don't care. She just does what the hell she wants to do. And I'm tired of it. My wife's tired of it. That's all I got to say.
I apologize. The word exactly is this.
It's on her address. It's 116th East Forest Street.
It's right behind the KFC.
And that's another thing.
Right behind the KFC.
Yeah. But jailhouse there. That's another thing. I haven't seen a cop patrol that place in six weeks. They used to come through there all the time. I ain't seen one up there in six weeks.
Through where? Where?
I mean, they used to patrol behind the KFC there and everything. I ain't seen one in six weeks. Well, I'm afraid they're going to see something and they won't do nothing about it, is what it is. They're scared to do anything about it. I'm tired of it. Like I said, I'm retired. I served this country for 10 years. I shouldn't have to live this crap. It's not right. She has no respect for me, the neighbors, or the law. Apparently, she don't have respect for the law at all. She just does what the hell she wants to do. And I'm tired of it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you so much for coming and letting us know, sir.
Can I leave now?
Yes, sir, you may. But does anyone have any insights into... Can you guys tell us what we've done so far in terms of the town for these complaints?
For this particular complaint?
Yes.
I think you... I can't see everything on the file. She was just asked to be here, and I'm sorry, I don't have the receipt.
It's okay.
Or I can look up video whether she got it or not.
So exactly what has she been notified of that she's in violation of?
She's in violation of the noise ordinance and the nuisance ordinance.
Do you know anything about the RV in the... in her yard?
That I do not know.
Haven't heard that one yet. Have you... Go ahead.
The day that I drove over here, the RV wasn't parked there, not that it wasn't a sleeping, but I cannot confirm that it's been there this season. In my opinion, I don't think it has.
Have you...
It is parked there currently, but it has not been.
So you've seen it parked like in the driveway?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's like a... It's like a gravel... She doesn't really have a driveway. It's just a little gravel area around her house.
So, okay.
Are people allowed to have chickens? Ducks?
We don't have an ordinance against it, but when people would call me and ask me about it, I would tell them that we don't have an ordinance against it. That's what I would tell them. But I said, "If we get a complaint, we will have to act on it." And I told them about nuisance complaint and the noise complaint. That's what... Anytime anyone asks me about chickens, that's what I would do.
So basically, you can have chickens as long as your neighbors don't complain?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a limit to the number of chickens that you're allowed to have, or animals in general?
Well, if... According to our animal control code, it's four animals.
Okay.
Is that...
So that means she's in a violation of the animal control?
What does that mean? You can have two cats and two dogs, or four dogs and four cats?
I believe it states that just four animals unless you have a kennel license.
Right.
I thought that... I actually thought the animal control code was for dogs only, but after rereading it, the definition of animal is it covers everything, so...
Covers everything? So the answer, I think, is no. It's four animals, two cats, two dogs, not by species, in my interpretation. Do you have something about this violation?
A couple of these. Sergeant Dakota Richardson did respond to his house on a couple of occasions. I personally have also driven over there. I drive over there every day. You'll see me in the mornings, because the first... One of the first things I do is drive the whole town just to see if I see anything new or whatever it might be. I've personally set over there between his house and her house at times around 8:30 in the morning, 9 o'clock in the morning. I've never heard a chicken or a rooster, but I've never been there at crack of dawn to know if that happens. I've never seen a dog out. My officers have never seen a chicken out. We've talked with him. He says that they are in his yard coming out. Now, this is the first we've heard of any photographs that he has or anything that he's on his phone. He's never produced that to any of us. And because we've told him, we come over here when we're called. So if someone calls us, it's not a six-hour duration. It never has been.
So can you tell us what she has said about complying?
She has chickens that's in a coop that we've never seen out of that coop. So I don't know if they're going in his yard. I've never seen any dogs running at large. I don't know how many dogs she has inside the house. Okay, if a dog is barking...
Are you saying that she's not in violation, as far as you guys have seen?
Violation of having too many chickens?
Well, I think we've...
She was cited for noise and nuisance.
Noise and nuisance. So has...
So if we go over there, there's a noise ordinance in reference to a dog, or a cat, or I guess a rooster or a chicken. If we shut up and we're sitting there listening for a duration of at least 15 minutes, and it's an excessive noise, then yes, that would be in a violation of that. Let's say you have a dog. Someone comes up to your door and rings your doorbell, and the dog starts barking. Dog barks for five or 10 minutes. The guy leaves. That's not unreasonable. That's just a dog being a dog in this scenario. But if they're outside and they're just howling for 15 minutes, yes, that would be a noise ordinance. We've never witnessed any of this.
So is it possible for you to have someone to sit there from 5:00, you know, 5:30, 6:00, or go periodically around that time to see the volume of noise from the rooster?
I will come in tomorrow morning at 5:00. When is the daylight?
Well, I'm not saying you... I mean, the night shift. There's someone on night shift. Can that person just go to this guy's house?
But I can guarantee you that he would be free at that particular time. But if I come out myself, I'm not going to be on call, so I can know I can be at that time. So what time?
I believe it said 5:30 or 6:00.
Is it daylight at that time? So I don't want to sit for two hours looking at chickens or roosters, but I will come out and see if there is a noise issue. And again, we have talked to him. We have been in that area. Multiple officers have been over there. I've been over there. And we have yet to witness any chickens or any noise whatsoever. 7:11?
Yeah.
So I'll go over there. You want me to sit over from 6:00 to 7:11, an hour and 15 minutes?
No, Chief Mitchum, I just asked you to go over there at the time where he...
Well, he said 5:17, so that's going to still be dark. Do they roost or crow at nighttime? I don't know.
No.
Yes, they do.
Do they?
Sometimes.
About 4:00.
5:00. They will.
Okay. So...
In the evening also.
So he said 5:30?
What if I already said?
So I'll go there at 5:30 in the morning, and I'll sit over there until I can get a good read on if there's a noise. And then I will double that accordingly if that's what you wish to do, so we can resolve this matter.
Well, I just want to make sure that the town is on the same page here. It sounds like, as far as you guys are concerned, she has not been in violation of any code. Is that what everyone else is hearing from him so far? Is that what you're hearing?
I would just say, so the officers haven't observed any violations, and I spoke to 20 of your officers today.
Yeah. Sergeant Samuel Stone.
Yes. And he had said the same thing. They haven't observed anything. Now, Mr. Cooley is saying differently. So ultimately, what would need to happen is this board would need to determine is what Mr. Cooley is telling us enough to constitute a nuisance, even though our officers have observed it themselves. It's just, you're sitting essentially as the judge at this point. What I would suggest, because we can't confirm whether or not the notice for her to be here tonight is delivered right now, I would say we just... I would suggest just taking the matter under advisement and doing, you know, additional... And with Chief Mitchum offering to go over there in the morning, just do some additional digging into it and see what's going on.
I love that. I didn't know. Okay. What do you guys... Does any...
I'm following.
A move that we table this until next week, until we can find out if she was... And maybe invite her back next week?
Okay. If she did receive the letters, do you want me to send out another letter or is that an officer?
I think another letter would be good to ask her to come here. If she... I mean, the last communication we had from her, she wanted to appeal. So we need to provide her with that opportunity to appeal officially.
I would say that if she had... She, you know, she timely asked to appeal, and if she was given notice of tonight's hearing, essentially in court speak, she would be impeached. If she asked to be here tonight, she knew about tonight, and she's not.
I'm just going on the premise that maybe she didn't get no...
Yeah, by all means, if we can't confirm that the letter is delivered before tonight's meeting, then I would, by all means, send a new one in.
Can I ask what she's appealing?
You want to put your mic on? She's appealing the fact that she's in violation of the code, of these two codes.
But everything I've heard is we can't prove that anymore.
Well, right. That's why Andy was suggesting that we table it to do further investigation.
Could we hit Mr. Cooley's video or recordings or...
I'm sure the police officers, now that they know that it's available, I'm sure they'll ask for it. Okay. So I moved to...
I just want... I'm Carol's eyes are, and I just wanted to tell you something about chickens real quick. This might help you guys. In a lot of the counties or in a lot of the suburbs, what they end up doing is they let people have so many chickens, they have to stay in a coop, but they're not allowed to have roosters, period. Because roosters crow anywhere. We raise chickens. So they crow anywhere before, right before dark. So around 5:00, depending, time's changing, so that's going to change things, all the way to about 7:00. But they don't keep crowing. They crow as the sun's coming up, and then they normally quit. And so a lot of the places say you can have so many chickens, they stay in a coop. They're not allowed to do it free range or anything, but no roosters, because you can't stop a rooster from crowing. Can't expect somebody to sit out there for two hours and three hours not knowing when the sun is going to come up. I don't know if that helps you guys.
Thank you. It does.
But it's...
Thank you. Okay. So does someone want to make a motion about this appeal?
Make a motion that we take it under advisement.
John made a motion to take it under advisement. Is there a second? Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Back to the water wastewater asset management plan.
I almost told you that the timeline would be around six months, which is what... That's Triad, but that's what Commonwealth's... Their timeline is also. Triad's quote for just the water is $25,000, and for the wastewater is $25,000, so 50 altogether. And Commonwealth's quote for just the water is $40,000. And there's no... There's no quote for wastewater.
So do you recommend one over the other, or just dollar figures at this point?
I make dollar figures.
So, go ahead.
Well, can I get a little bit of explanation, and I apologize for leaving it? What are we putting or what are we talking about?
Can you actually talk into the mic again? I'm sorry. The people can't hear. I'm sorry.
Okay. I was just wondering, so brief... See, I can't hear you.
It's okay. You're fine. Good job.
A brief explanation of what this is on.
It's for an asset management plan. The asset management plan is an inventory of all your water lines, water mains, sewer mains, connections, valves, everything that has to do with your water and sewage lines.
Yes.
It pretty much outlines what you have in your system. Sewer mains, valves, manholes, things like that. And whenever you upgrade, you can upgrade your asset management plan. In this case, we've never had an asset management plan before, because in Waters' case, we've never borrowed any money. But there's all kinds of money out there for... State of the Home Loan and Indiana Finance has all kinds of low or low-cost loans or even grants available. We can't get to them because we don't have an asset management plan. That's one of the requirements that almost everyone has, is to have an asset management plan. So that's what we're attempting to do.
So the way that I understand it is these plans look at everything that you have on hand, and they tell you what it looks like, what the maintenance is of it, when they think, when they anticipate that you should replace it. It's kind of like maintenance records, but just by looking at it right away. It just tells us, hey, in five years, you should expect to replace the clarifier, or we think you should replace this at this time, or, hey, you've got these 10 things that need attention right now. Once they bust, you're toast. That's the kind of expertise, that they look at everything. So you can definitely use that and come up with a financial plan over years. And that's why these plans are required when you're getting any money for grants, because they want to know if they're putting money into it, is this something that an expert says that you actually need? And that's what we don't have and we need. And the reason why this is so important for us is because our intent is to replace the lead copper main at CBS?
Well, it's not actually at CBS. It's on 52 alongside CBS. We have one water main that we have never replaced service lines on, and that's our last remaining one, and I'm fairly certain I'm going to find copper or lead, I'm sorry, in that area. And that's all we need to... We need to...
So once we do that, once we get the estimate for that, it's going to be a lot of money. And we're going to... What I think that we should do is apply for the State of Volty Fund grant for that project. Those grants, you have the deadline to submit for that is the 1st of April. And so now it's the 1st of September. So we only have seven months to get our packet together to submit for that money. And again, the requirement is an asset management plan. And that's why this is so important, that we do this now, and it comes in on time. So we meet the deadline of 1 April, because if we don't, then we have to wait another year. And during 2025 is when the state of Indiana plans on ripping up that 52 and replacing it. So our idea is to go ahead and get this project going in 2024, fix it, so that when the state comes in in 2025, they're not ripping up... You know, we're not a year behind them, and they're ripping up a brand-new road just so we can replace lead water main, which we already know about now. We just need to move it along and meet this 1 April deadline. Is that...
That's exactly what's going on.
Okay. So that's why this is so important. Okay, so that's why this is so important.
Make a motion that we approve the triad.
John has just made a motion to award the water system asset management plan to triad engineering, triad associates. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? So Alan, I just want to make sure we're on the record with this. This is six months, so six months from right now, we will have this plan in our hands.
For, for the, your SRS deadline, yes?
For the SRS deadlines, very. Thank you. Okay, next is the building permit expiration date. Pardon? No, that was just for the, sorry, that's why, this is just for the water, water system asset management plan. That's, that's the one we needed for the...
Did you want both of them?
Sorry.
Well, I suppose for having done, for additional room needed. Waste, or wastewater also, that's entirely up to you.
Did Commonwealth know it'd be done?
I'm not sure. No, we can announce it.
Oh, we're just big on water.
Do we have to say diamond for wastewater that we give for water?
No, wastewater is not, not that critical.
Well, let's, don't do anything wastewater now until you get a bid, but that's what I think.
Sounds good? Okay. Okay. Any update, Tim, on the WTH submitting the inventory? So one of the first parts of this lead copper replacement is for WTH to submit the inventory. Did you say it was due by October?
October 24th or something, 2025, or 24th, sorry, next year. This one is due, but we need it.
Now?
Yes, we need it in order to get this funding.
Yes.
And I have talked to them several other times and I'm working with them. They are speeding up the process if this done as quickly as possible. And I don't know what that means exactly, but I am working with them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is the building permit expiration date.
We do it in 25?
No.
We table it?
So next is the, so one of the things that this council has talked about is limiting building permits to only one year. And I think what we did is we put that on the application. Is, building permit expires in 12 months from the date of issuance. But that actual timeframe is not included in our code. So I guess, Andy, in order to enforce the building permit expires in 12 months, do we have to have that in our code?
I would suggest having that in the papers. I think, I think having it on there, having a 12 month timeframe on there right now is fine because it's somewhat of a taper for you to check into where the, where the things stand on these permits that have been issued. But if you want something that's enforced, we can just have some.
So we have some residents that are not in compliance with their building permit because it doesn't say that it expires in 12 months. And so we don't have a way to enforce that with them. So whatever we put in our code that says building permits expire in 12 months, is there, is it, is it possible to say retroactively as well? I mean, we could have people with a permit that they got two years ago and say, hey, this doesn't expire according to your code.
It's what's known as an ex post facto law. That's basically making something legal after it's already been done. Zoning, the world's zoning called pre-existing non-conforming use. It's not, no. Seven ways for it.
So we could be dealing with these people for a while?
I mean, I think you would.
Great.
Who handles, is there a bounty voting commissioner that does inspections? Does it handle by town? The, the voting inspections are done by the county. Just the issue of building, mainly on just the site plan, just to check stuff out, things like that. The county does the homework. I mean, I think if... Are things being started and just not finished?
So for instance, an owner puts a trash, big old trash thing on their property because they're allowed to do that during construction because they have a permit. And when, when they're, when we try to enforce the code that says you can only have one of those big old trash bins on your property for 10 days, they say, too bad, I have a building permit and it lasts forever. So they can have it on there forever. So that's what I'm just trying to prevent.
I would check with, I would check with the voting commissioner to see if the reason the building permit was issued has been completed or not. Because if the project has been completed, then the permit's null.
At the county?
I mean, if we, if, if they issued a permit for them to do an addition on their house and the county voting commissioner says, yeah, I inspected that and gave them a certificate of occupancy because the project's done, then I would say they don't have a permit anymore because they're not engaged in a voting process.
Okay. Now, on this opposite though, wasn't that addition or was it violation?
Oh, so it's just an example. I just used addition. I just said addition as an example.
Okay, I just didn't know.
I actually got with addition when she said dumpster.
That's okay. So, okay, got it. I would still like to move that we amend chapter 151 that says that our building permits only last 12 months.
Do we need any write that?
Yeah, we would need at least something to put in there. So I can do something together.
I guess I have a second?
Well, we got word till we get to...
Gotcha. Thank you.
Well, she can do it right now.
Yeah, thank you. Next is the building permit number 993 for Jesse Sewell, 27 feet above ground pool.
I, I look at the, I can see. Make a motion to approve.
John made a motion to approve the pool at 40, sorry, 40 West Third Street for above ground pool. Is there a second?
Second.
Earl seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried? Next is the sidewalk replacement program. So one of the things that previous council had done is set up a sidewalk replacement program fund to help residents replace their sidewalks and the town would fund 50% of the project. During that time, they established rates that the town would pay based off of looking at all the different contractors in town. And as I, as I took a look closer and Gina pulled all the receipts for what the town has paid so far, we've discovered that prices have increased. So I would like the town to take a look at this, what Gina has created here, this email that lists all the different contractors and all the different prices that they have charged people in town and come up with a different number. Because at this point, I think the town provides $2.50 per foot. And if we want to stay with the 50-50 program, I think we need to up that by a dollar. I would like to, well, anyway, up it by something.
First is money control.
Ed.
Wait, do we have enough from Ed?
We have a, we have a balance and then you guys can determine how many projects you want to do based on the balance and you want. That's how, I mean, I think initially they talked about 25, up to 25,000 this first year. But if you decide, well, we only want to do 10,000 this year or less or more, I think that's, I don't think it's specifically stated in that application.
And I hate to ask you this, Gina, I know you've given us the dollar amount before. Do you know about how much we, we've paid, the town has paid for this program or this year or maybe?
I think we have. We've paid owners from previous years this year, not...
We haven't done it for this year?
I don't think so. We've paid owners this year.
I don't think so either. That's right. Okay.
I don't think we have been from previous year.
So I think this is a really good program to incentivize homeowners to fix their sidewalks. And I want to kind of get it right back out there in the, in the public so that they are encouraged to do, do just that. And I think this is a great project. I'd like to continue it at least and make the prices a little bit more consistent with what the market is at this point.
Are you looking for a motion?
Well, yeah, I mean, we want to talk about the dollar amounts, I mean, based off of email traffic.
If we got money.
Yeah. No one's done a sidewalk this year. Be great if people started. It looks like from Gina's...
They will submit an application, get a quote, the one will come to you prior to any. So if you say not at this time, can't approve at this time, be down the road. And that's your discretion, basically, in my opinion. Because you're approving individually applications.
What did you just say?
Sorry.
We approve them individually?
You approve applications individually anyway. So if somebody does bring one forward, you all are going to have to review it and vote on it. And you can ask them, do we have positive or?
So do we have to raise this on our end to be able to give them what they need? Or do we just do that per application?
So the initial application, that was what the previous council decided on. And that was in 2024, which was, it was a while ago. So I'm sure prices have increased substantially since then just based on the contractors' prices that we've seen. So I don't know if council wants to research a little bit further to see what they think would be more fair or if you were to go by averages that... I'm very not sure how you can proceed.
So they wanted to do a program for 50-50. Homeowner pays 50, we pay 50.
I understand that.
And at the time, I guess they decided that a normal amount to charge per foot is $5, which is why they set the amount for the town at just 250. And then all these other contractors came in with all these, you know, we're talking about contractors that are charging, you know, $9. Here's one that charged $16.88 a square foot. And the town provided 250 because that's what we're based it off of. So that's why I'd just like to up that 250 by, I'm thinking, a dollar to 350 a square foot. Based off of Gina's calculations, if, if you throw out the, the top two that are $16.88 and $14.20, you're left with a couple of different averages. So split the difference, looks like maybe about $7 a foot might be common. And then if we take half of that, that's 350. And that, okay.
Why not just, when you have a project that wants to be approved, just tell them 50%? No, after a dollar amount, to pay 50% of what the final cost is.
I think the problem with that might be contractors pricing. I think you want to kind of regularly make it even because we have gotten a wide variety of contractors pricing.
You've still been out or whatever, what you want to do. Take, pick the contract you want to go with, split the cost between the homeowner 50%, the town 50%.
But if they pick it, the contractor is going to charge $16.80 a foot compared to one that's charging $7, then we have to pay more money.
I'm saying the town should be have some kind of say in it also. Who's going to pick the contractor?
The homeowner picks it.
The homeowner, yeah. We can't tell.
So the homeowner is responsible for submitting a quote with their application for you to look at initially, so.
And then do we pay the homeowner or do we pay the contractor?
Pay the contractor.
We pay the contractor. So, yeah, it's up to the homeowner to decide.
So the town's willing to pay 50% of their project. Town will have some say in it too.
I, I think the issue you run into is if you're using public funds, I think homeowners should have to show that they obtained at least three quotes.
I mean, these are pretty small projects, Andy. I mean, I think, what do they usually, Gina? A thousand, maybe, maybe 2,000? I mean, they're pretty small.
Hard because everybody's busy, so I don't know that achieving three quotes would be realistic for some people, for small projects.
I mean, I like the set amount that way. Contractors know, homeowners know, it's up to them. If they want to be somebody with $16 a square foot, that's up to them. At least they'll get some help from us. I just wanted to balance it a little more from the last two years and inflation and all that. That's what I just...
How do you come to the conclusion if you do it like a 50-50 basis and like you were saying, one, one contractor will maybe just charge you $20 a square foot? You have to put a limit somewhere or I'm not saying that the contractor could pad the bill and maybe the town basically pay for customers like long.
What, the way I understand it is we could go up to 350 and we would pay more. They got $16 a square foot.
Yes.
We would just pay 350.
That's if we do it at 350, but if we would do it like just, just a plain half, half that, that doesn't seem to work or I...
Yeah, yeah, it's not actually 50-50 that way. It's up to the amount.
But, but the, but the $0.05, I think that's a good figure. The prices that I've been seeing, it'll certainly help a lot, so.
Thanks.
Could we do it as a rebate and get out of all the 50 cents to $20? We just say, you, you sidewalk in the county, use a $50 rebate up to a certain...
$3.50 per foot?
Not get out of that all the day, but you just say, if it's X amount footage, the town will give you $200 as a rebate.
So technically, that might be just on my end. I have to either, when I pay a claim, it has to either be like an invoice or a receipt. I have to have something to put with my voucher when I do pay some money. So that might be more of a, they might get... I don't know, they need to like, if I give a distribution to someone as a, you know, rather than a, somebody who's performing a service, I guess, is my issue with that.
I'm, I'm all right with the 350, raising it to 350. I'm all right with that. I think we're kind of trying to think.
I think we might be making it more complicated than it, it should be. I just wanted to get it within the prices.
I don't pay what she gave you, this is a...
You don't like the sidewalk program?
I don't. I pay what she's paying for people's sidewalk. It's just okay.
So John, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to affect the rate to 350.
I'll second that motion. All in favor? All opposed? Gina?
All in favor.
Motion passed. Okay, next is New Mercy's contract.
So New Mercy utilizes that space, but they will block, well, build fire pass water plant. They were just here not too long ago asking to make some improvements to the building and the storage shed and the garage portion. So it's time to actually renew their lease that came $1 a year. I spoke to Andy earlier because I was worried the contract deadline, I think it expired like nine months. But he assured me that it would carry on to a month-to-month lease at this point. So I don't know if you want to make any changes to the lease, do you want to discuss the lease?
It would like to switch to a month-to-month at the, at the end of its term, so. So there was no rush to get anything done. But, I mean, if it's, if it's fine the way it is, then you can just change the dates and bring it back for next meeting, or if there's any changes that anybody wants to see, just you, I, you know.
I mean, I personally, if we're going to provide an opportunity, or provide a building for them, I'd like them to come in, at least tell, tell us what they're doing. Um, not, maybe not every month, but, you know, twice a year or something, at least let us know what's happening there. Um, just like we do Main Street, just like the fire department, I mean, we.
Do you want to put that in the contract?
I don't know if we need to do that. I just, you know, would rather hear from them. Do we need to include that in here?
I mean, you don't have to, but I think if it's me, I would recommend it. If you want to have them come in and they support the update, or need by any, or whatever update, I would put it in there in that way, if they don't do it, we have it in the contract there.
Everybody okay with that? Add it in?
How frequently?
Twice a year is fine.
Thank you. Next is the task organization chart. So, uh, one of the things that came out of the hostile work environment investigation was the attorney suggested that we establish an organizational chart for the town and who reports to who. And so, uh, we had an executive meeting and came up with this organizational chart. And it basically, um, creates, well, now, yeah. The chart has a position of town manager on it, which we don't have right now. And then we have, um, four department heads that report, not report, but they have lines directly to the town manager. And that's the, uh, police, water, race water, street department, and the golf course manager. And I think that's kind of it. And if this is approved, then the public will be able to have a copy of this after. Um, so I guess, uh, I just want to ask if anybody has any questions or comments, or.
Do you want to have time? Let's either this one or the next one. Please. Either this one or the next one, I mean, one time or another.
He hasn't seen this before tonight. If you want to table it for two weeks, they would take it like that. Is there, are we in a rush to get that?
Uh, no, but the longer that we go without leadership in the town, the worse it is. And this is our first opportunity to actually get this done. And the, we do have a, a majority that was there.
Yeah, but he hasn't seen it. He is a member. I think it's on the right to allow him to have input on it. I make the motion that we table this until the next meeting.
Do you have anything?
It's tackled. I know you say you have four department heads, here says five.
My bad. Uh, John made a motion to table this, uh, task organization, and Dan seconded. Uh, is there any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Two to two, Gina?
Uh, Gina, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Um, when you were with a chart, is it much different from when you served previously?
Oh, yeah. There's about fifteen more people. We've got managers, manager, manager.
Right, so.
That's, that's not good.
So in my opinion, um, I think since we don't have what most, like, say, cities have as a mayor who kind of oversees, um, we need that point person. I think previously we had a town administrator, and then we went to Director of Special Projects, which really, I felt there was no flow.
I'm not opposed to the, what I'm opposed to is who fills all those points.
That's not, so the, but all this is, is.
Well, basically, it's going to get to that.
Well, these are just.
You create the position and, and you'll fill it.
So.
Right, but this is just for the purpose of the, the flow chart. And this was recommended by the attorney that did that investigation.
Okay, I, like I say, I'm okay with the flow chart.
Okay.
But I think, and maybe it's already determined somewhere, but there, you know, in my mind, I need, I need to be able to sit down and say, okay, this person becomes town manager, and this person, because I don't even know all these people.
Sure.
And I, I need a little time to say, okay, we, we have this, and we have that, and can that work for the town manager? Or do we hire new town manager? I, I mean, this.
But I guess my question to you is, I just want to make sure you're okay with this chart, just not filling the positions yet, is what I'm.
Correct.
Okay, so not what we pay.
In favor?
For.
The chart?
The chart.
That's what I'm.
The only new thing on the chart is the town manager.
That's correct.
Your town manager being on the chart is contingent upon the next item.
Right.
Oh, so I guess I was supposed to say I oppose.
No.
Because he said, Rich, on the table, and Dan seconded.
Oh, right.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so I.
Oppose.
You oppose, okay. Okay, so I move that we approve this chart minus the department heads on the right-hand side, it says five, it should, it should be four. My, uh, I'll correct that on the final version. I move that we approve this chart for the positions only of what's authorized in the town, not the people's names. Is there a second?
A second.
Earl seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Next is the ordinance that establishes the position of the town manager for the town of Brookville. So, uh, uh, from what I understand, this ordinance is required to create the position of the town manager, because there's a lot of laws that are already on the books, uh, for, uh, for the state of Indiana, that we have to either, um, approve into our town manager, or, or not approve. And so we have to write our own ordinance that either brings those state laws in, or deletes some, and so that's what Andy did, based again off of our, um, executive session. And I think this is pretty consistent with what the town administrator used to do. Um, this is just, again, just establishing the position itself, and that's in our ordinance. With the duties and, not all the duties and responsibilities.
Right, so the state, state statute allows towns to employ town manager, just by state statute. This, uh, the ordinance codifies what Brookville's town manager's duties, responsibilities, what they will do, what they can't do. It puts that all in the code of ordinance, because as Bridget was saying, there's, there's a statute that says, here's the town manager's duties, and that is the default duties for the town manager, unless you put in writing something different. And so, you know, the.
So do we currently have what I would call a job?
No, we're creating it.
Well, uh, it's easy to create, yeah. Are we going to follow the, the ordinance that, and you spoke about, are we going to come up with a true job description that says this guy does that?
So the ordinance is not the same as the job description. So the ordinance is kind of like, just.
But how do you create a job that?
Well, that's what, that's what our next step is, to create the job description as a council. To go over the, and make, and do the specific duties, responsibilities, and expectations in the job description, based off of the fact that we have all signed and approved this ordinance that even establishes it. So the only thing that's in here that is not in the law is that this ordinance does not allow the town, town manager to hire and fire full-time or part-time employees. It only allows them to hire and fire seasonal. So the council retains that ability to hire and fire employees. Uh, and in the law, the town manager, um, is allowed to hire and fire, and that's what we decided that we don't want that. We want to retain that at, at the council, and that's, that's pretty much the only thing in here that's different.
And that's how it works, but that's okay.
Okay, why, why won't it work?
It's, it don't really fit. That's kind of.
This is, this is for, if you don't mind speaking into the mic, Dan. Um, this is for, I, I just said hiring and firing.
One of the biggest things in our first, we can't, we missed third, uh, town of Brookville, is where does all the money come from? And sooner or later, and this is kind of an editorial, or an opinion, sooner or later, we're going to have to look at the expenditures and quit adding jobs and titles and pay people that kind of money. I, I mean, it's, it's a town of three thousand people. It's not full-time. And for those that haven't dealt with me before, that's going to be one of my biggest goals for the people of Brookville, is to make sure that we're just not spending money like we're done. Looking at the budget, I know where it's all going. That we owe, what, fifteen years of the pool we get? You ask everybody in Brookville, the pool is paid for, and they'll tell you yes. But we, we're into it for how many thou, hundred and some thousand dollars? I'm done. Sorry if that, okay.
It's okay.
As far as expenditures, you're paid a special projects meeting right now. It's pretty much just switching name and title pretty much. Instead of Special Projects Directors, Town Manager. You're not really spending any of that extra.
But wait, wait.
So I, I personally feel very strongly that this town, just like all the other towns, uh, in Indiana that are run by councils, deserve, we deserve to have someone in charge. We do, we deserve to have someone that is the representative of the council, with the people and with the employees, and that's what this position, um, would do. We, we, because we don't have this position in the town, uh, there's a lot of misunderstandings and chaos, and who's in charge of who, and who has to ask for what, and this would streamline that, so we can actually run a little bit more proficiently. You wouldn't have a manufacturing plant without a manager of the plant, with a bunch of department heads, and then the board of directors. You have to have someone in charge of the plant. That's what this is.
I'm just saying that I, I think if you're going to create that position, and I don't disagree with it, but they need to have the ability to manage your people, which is to hire and fire. And if you don't trust them to do that, you've made the wrong choice.
I respectfully disagree. I think the council should maintain that authority to hire and fire.
That's why we're talking about chickens.
I don't understand what your comment is, Dan, I'm sorry. I didn't understand the reference.
Well, we got to let these people do their job. I mean, we have, we have two ordinances, by the way, here we go. God knows how many people, and, and nobody, if we add anything, we ought to order adding a compliance officer.
We already have a code enforcement officer.
Always fine. Okay, I'm, I'm done. Sorry, I can't.
As far as hiring and firing, the town manager, the town manager can recommend to the town board.
If you can please keep the comments, if you want to come up, you can, but we're, I'm sorry, Earl, I did not hear you. Can you say?
As far as the town manager hiring and firing, the town manager can send to the board, recommend then to hire or fire someone, be, and they can agree, or just free to do what they want to do.
Is there any other discussion, or is there a motion on the floor? For ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash eleven?
So this would be first reading tonight. If it were to be considered tonight, it requires unanimous consent of all members present to consider an ordinance of the same meaning that it's introduced.
Oh, sorry, yes, okay, so the first motion is, is there, does anyone, would anyone like to motion that we consider this tonight and sign it tonight, for the first and second reading? No motions on the table, so that means this is the first reading. So we will.
Back next meeting.
Put this on the.
Then the next meeting and second reading would be something similar.
Okay, thank you. Next is the, um.
Did we take a vote on the first reading? Did we have to take?
No.
No, it's just.
Finish the first reading and then have it, and it's a discussion.
Um, next is the twenty-twenty-four budget. So we had the budget workshop here last week, and it ran kind of late, and we stopped really making decisions after the late hour, so we kind of said, let's table some things for tonight to finish the conversation. And, um, the first thing on the list is the police vehicle. So one of the, so one of the things we talked about during our budget meeting is, uh, well, let's talk about salary increases, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Let's talk.
Wait, this isn't going to be possible for you, but since Dan's first meeting, and this is a budget, which is very important, I make the motion that we table this and allow him, are we up against?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I have to advertise by Friday to make our first public hearing.
Oh, sure.
Eighteenth, sorry. Unless you guys, you have time before Friday for a special, if anybody's available.
They have one Thursday. We're on that forty-eight hours.
So Gina, the earliest we could have this special meeting would be Friday?
I don't know.
If you got a meeting, you, you put out a notice at nine AM tomorrow morning, forty-eight hours, it'll be nine AM Friday.
And when do you have to advertise?
Uh, Friday, I have got ten days. So as long as it's posted in Gateway Friday, I shoot before midnight.
Do you ever have to find the numbers proposed, or do?
So this is just, um, proposed. It's all proposed. Do you, we, we're going to have a public hearing on whatever is in those line items?
Couldn't we go with, the, we can't increase it from what we advertised. Can you go with the larger numbers, and then we can, after everybody's had a look at it, then we can cut it down?
Correct.
Correct, I didn't know.
Yeah, DLGF says that you can advertise higher and can lower, but you can't advertise lower rates, so.
The candidate is on a, that's.
I thought you meant to give them.
No, no, I mean, that's, that's how they've done it for E M. So I make a motion to table.
Can we just hold on a second? Earl, would you, are you available on Friday?
I'll have a funeral Friday evening.
You have a funeral Friday evening.
What about next Monday?
Does, that doesn't take the ten days, she has to do it by Friday.
Well, he's saying, I think you're suggesting I just advertise higher.
Yeah.
Those.
Yeah. Like you said, that's what the candidate does all the time, it's nothing wrong with it. We just pair it down.
I guess I don't, I'm, I'm confused.
So.
So why don't we meet about budget at all, if you can just estimate whatever?
Well, because you, the public has to know what you're proposing, or what you're suggesting, and then they get a chance to ask questions and speak on it. Um, then we can go back, fix whatever we want to fix, before we finalize everything, and then you adopt it that following meeting.
So the public hearing is September eighteenth?
Correct.
And then the final adoption is?
When was that first meeting?
October second?
Correct.
So then we don't have to meet at all, we can just say, table this until next, the eighteenth?
Well.
Well, you have to, we have to advertise it, but essentially, you want me to advertise with these unknowns?
Well, we, we had, we had figures in every, advertise that, and we can go down to what we need. We're not asking you to make up a figure, you've got.
What does she have? Here's the, here's the, which, which. Here's the, here's the, which, which figures are you talking about? You talking about with the, are, are you talking about approving every single capital request from every single department?
We're not approving anything.
I meant put it in, put, add that into the number that she advertised? Is that what you're suggesting?
We can't. If it's easier for her to do it that way, then yeah. Because it doesn't matter what she advertises. It matters what we end up with.
Okay.
I get what you're saying, this...
It's, it's just not...
...decision.
It's just not what normal municipalities do. Normally municipalities meet, make decisions on the budget, budget, figure out the budget and then have the bu- public hearing and then...
I'm telling you, the county doesn't do it that way.
They do, John, that I...
They don't, they advertise high and then they cut it.
Okay.
That's what I'm proposing, nothing more, nothing less.
But during their budget workshop that they have, the county has, they make decisions on what...
After they've already advertised. They advertise first, then they have the budget hearings and they cut it down. The auditor tells them, you've got this amount, they cut down to that amount. Then they have another meeting where everybody screams that. And then they have the final meeting where they adopt it.
Okay, I, I don't know that for sure. That's what I, I'm not...
I've heard it for 30 years and that's the process.
Okay.
The less and less people do it.
So what's, I'm sorry, can you remind me what the motion is on the table again?
I made a motion that she advertises the amount she has.
Can you be more specific with the amounts?
I don't have it for me. She has amounts.
So, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to make, be hateful, I just wanted to get something on the record. The amounts that you're talking about...
Do you understand what I'm saying, Gina?
So in, and I, I'm sorry, I was trying to, in my opinion, I would advertise whatever salary you're possibly thinking, um, I would advertise possibly a vehicle.
Yeah.
I would add...
No, no, I think he means, I think he means add in every type that...
Yes, all, all the requests they made.
Trying to confirm with you, John, but you interrupted me. Every request they made, you wanted to add that in, right?
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to confirm with you, with your motion. I wasn't trying to trick you.
Well, that's why I asked Gina if she understood.
I think also too, we had asked a couple of the departments to prioritize their unfunded.
I think he wants to just include all those in the, in the advertised price, Gina.
And then we can go back and cut to what we have. That way, it's not confusing to you.
Oh, okay.
That you just do what's on...
I just left it from where we were at, um...
Do you have the original?
On the 30th, when we talked about they needed to decide about the police vehicle.
Yeah.
Um, and then I think he's going to prioritize his unfunded requests.
Do, do you have the original?
The same way, the original.
That we went, that we looked at first on the special deal.
So...
I think the only question was, in my opinion, or, and I don't know if you guys agree, is those two departments and their salaries, right?
Yeah.
I think those will be the only unknowns, in my opinion. We both, we made a third request, we got...
Okay, I'm all right with that.
Do you think, Earl, I, I don't, in my opinion, we found out the place and the workforce.
Yeah, we do, I agree.
Because it got so late.
Yeah.
And salaries.
And salaries, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm okay with that.
Is there, is, is there a second? Is there a second to John's motion?
I don't know, second?
Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Is there any other business to come before the board?
Okay, the memory, memory and understanding between the town of Brookville and Main Street Brookville that I presented the night at, uh, the budget meeting. And just, um, showed up to make sure that you guys had a chance to look at it and see if there was anything that, uh, you needed to change in it or any reporting, um, after speaking with a lawyer. If there's anything that we need to do on Main Street, send to, um, to sure up.
I think that, um, when I showed it to Andy, I think you said we should make it binding since we're giving them money?
I didn't have any issue with the MOU because it indicates that it's not binding. It's basically just a part of saying we intend to work together. What I was saying is if there is some type of transaction between the city, where the city gives Main Street money, then that should, there certainly needs an agreement, like what's the money for? And, um, if there, I think there was discussion maybe at least from the town, uh, space. And that should be at least a agreement, which is not...
So you don't want to include that stuff in this MOU or...
I don't, I think MOU's fine.
Just two different things?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Separately. I'm always thinking of what state worker councils say. I'm sure Gina's fine with that. So that's, that's, usually that's where my comments are coming from, is when we do an audit, we're in a state worker council audit test, is there an agreement that says where the money's going and what...
Right.
But the MOU, that's fine.
I mean, I'm okay with MOU, Brian, I, I think it, I think it clearly identifies, uh, what the relationship is between the both of us, or, are both, both of our organizations. But, um, John, what do you have? Do you have any comments about the MOU? Like, you want it on the table so that Dan can read it first? Since he's voting?
I think the attorney's fine for that. I think Dan's right, he's fine.
What's the MOU? We're signing that before the budget is approved? Is this about the money or...
The notes, it's a non-binding, we're together.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Here's what we would like to do.
They're going to do economic development?
Yeah.
They're going to help us with this historical, yeah, it's nothing to do with money, can you? It's okay, no problem.
We kind of went over at that special meeting, but it's a long time.
How do you feel about the MOU, Earl?
A bit.
So Dan, do you want to read the MOU first or you're okay?
No.
I move that we sign the MOU with Main Street?
I'll say it.
All in favor? All opposed? Do you have a clean copy? Great. Any other business to come before the board?
I, I have one question. Are we, just Gina, are we in our insurance covered under errors and omissions?
Yes, as council, as council members?
Or as the town as a whole?
I guess I'm not, um, we have the liability, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well, there's, my understanding is that errors and omissions, which basically says if one of our employees did something, you know, that could cause us a lawsuit, we would have coverage. Maybe it's under the law, I don't really know.
Yeah, yeah, I can send you, I can send you some of that information if you want to look at it, make sure...
The reason I say it is, in the end, not, you know, hit it, not respect. When I was on the board before, we went a long time without having any insurance.
Oh, no, we definitely have five early, uh, Dan, we're fully in on lawsuits after.
I think it's something other than...
Well, let's, let's not think of it as...
It's not, it's our bill. It's Tokio Marine, they used to carry us, now we have a different insurance. So, yeah, we'll cover it. You have something to add?
I just want to let you know the secretary started this month, Sergeant Williams got through his instructor courses, Leon McRae is at the academy, uh, so he's going through that. We had 10 criminal charges filed to the prosecutor's office and we had 21 Hartley ticket wrote. And I believe we had 10 or 11 warnings for speaker. That's all I could gather with everything else going on, so I thought I would just bring that, uh, to the board.
Thank you. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, I did one, um, and it's not. I had the senior class student council, which we, we let them use the same building last year to build their float. And they must be today and ask if they could use the, the building in the garage, um, to build their float between the 14th and the 22nd. Right now it's kind of split time, they went down there, unlocked the door, let in, and they went down and locked it, and they were finished.
The 14th to the 22nd of what month?
This one. Wait, let's ask me a second. Homecoming's the 22nd.
Can we secure the building that they can only get in the garage?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's on us next year too, because there was...
Well, that, we're going to have to move all our equipment out of the garage though, right?
Is there equipment in the garage?
Yeah.
There's a trailer in there. Yeah.
Yeah.
There's just a trailer, which is fine, I mean...
Well, I mean, I...
I can honestly, I mean, I can, but not that I can't. God, right first meeting, I had no idea what was in there, but last time I looked, it was just a trailer.
I've been in there, it's kind of fluctuated between several and one and I just, yeah, on who moves stuff in there. Um, and it was under construction as well. I mean, we just...
Actually working?
Not yet, no, but I mean, I don't, I can't, I sort of don't want to stop construction.
That was, no, I know, that's the question last year too, is that they have that same question about, about construction, but you can lock those doors, they can't get in. Even, they can't get through the one door to even get work in construction or the, if there was construction going on. And they can't do it until after school anyway, so, I mean...
If, if we can secure the building, that's fine. And there's nothing in the garage.
Okay. And there's...
No, there's, no, we're going to have to move stuff out. So we're going to have, they're going to, so the fire department's going to have to find different, a different place to move their stuff? And if the street department...
How much space are we talking about?
I don't know, John, I'm not sure.
There was, last year, there was, I don't know what it's called, there's sideways pipes in there, it's something like during, it wasn't even during bad time, I just remember it being in there. And then there was a trailer out, I don't know whose trailer it is, like what department it belongs to, to be totally split, or how often it's used, I have no idea.
And then we'll have to instruct the, the, any of the construction guys that they can't use that bay for those two weeks to store any of their equipment if they, you know, I don't know if they leave stuff overnight anywhere, but I have no idea. We'll just tell them that they can't use that portion. Is that, is that...
Are we, are we going to have construction?
I, I hope so.
Well, I mean...
I, I don't know. I, I, we met with, um, Charlie last week, um, and he's starting to get the subcontractors in there. So I, I don't know his schedule. I don't know their schedule, I don't know. He's got a key, so he just goes in whenever he needs to. I just, if, if, if we're going to approve this, we just need to let him know that he can't put anything in that, in that portion of it, because he has the key to a building, so...
What's the dates again?
She said the 14th through the probably 22nd, 22nd is on tonight, 14th through 22nd.
Well, will that be enough time for the fire department to get everything out, do you think?
I would say yeah, but I mean, I would say yes. It's a week and two days away, so I can't imagine this going to take over how many to move, but I don't know.
Would you like to talk to Todd about this before we approve it, or would you like to pending?
Uh, what does Dan think? And Earl?
They're going to have another meeting before we approve it.
Dan? I said, I just want to see what Dan thinks.
Yeah, I saw it, but it works with...
Earl's...
They're going to have another meeting to approve before, though.
Yeah.
What do you think, Dan?
I don't even know what you're talking about. Is this about, uh, the...
The Miller Building.
It's okay, he can't, he can't hear you, Jess.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Last year we approved...
It's, it's fine, well, you want to make a motion to let him in your mic float?
I don't want anybody to do anything, I'm just asking what the council wants to do.
Well, I, do we need the motion maybe?
My opinion is we best have a motion. The question is, do we need the motion, it's best we just...
If you're back soon, I hope we stay in touch.
And what's your motion?
That we let the senior class, the way we developed, well, in his own building, that all the restrictions and, uh, things that go...
From the 14th to the 22nd of September? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. If there's no further business, all entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second? Hold on. All in favor? Dan seconded, all in favor, motion passed. Meetings, meetings adjourned.